Good afternoon. It is 4:30 on Tuesday, June 14th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I am filling in this afternoon for Mr. Lopez, who is, who may be attending virtually. I'm not 100% sure. So with that, I'll do roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move into approving our regular agenda, I will go over our board norms as we start all of our board meetings with. So we as a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, to continuously self-check and determine if we are following our board norms when conducting district business. So thank you again for being here. And with that, I entertain a motion to approve our regular agenda.
Prior to Madam Chair, I'd like to add an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters related to security measures, which if discussed in open session would jeopardize such security measures.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board. And now I will entertain a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is communications. We'll start with Dr. Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few pieces of information to share with you this evening. The first being, we were excited to celebrate the retirement of more than 60 KC KPS employees last Wednesday here at Central Office. Human Resources and the Communications and Marketing Team partnered to plan and host a special red carpet event for all of our retirees. We want to thank all of our retirees for their years of service and dedication to our students, parents, and their fellow coworkers. You will be truly missed. This is just a reminder and observance of the National Juneteenth Holiday. KC KPS and its administrative offices will be closed Monday, June 20th. Juneteenth is the oddest nationally celebrated commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States. As we observe Juneteenth, we pause and reflect on its significance as an important milestone in American history. The district will reopen during regular hours on Tuesday, June 21st. Also, I look forward to participating in our local Juneteenth and the DOT Celebration this Saturday, June 18th. If you are available, please come out and support the celebration. It's from 9:00 to 11:00. And it will be held on Quandero, I think 10th and Quandero to 27th and Quandero. I'm excited to be a part of the program along with Mayor/CEO of the Unified Government, Tyrone Gartner, District Attorney Mark Dupree, and Kansas City, Kansas Police Chief Carl Oakman. And I hope to see you there. Our Extended Learning Summer Program is going well. Students enjoy the enrichment and interactive learning opportunities around instructional and projects-based content areas. Eugene Ware students made kites last week as a part of their project-based learning activity "To Be Free: Love Learning." This was shared on their school's Twitter page. Lots of things similar to that are happening at all of our schools, and we're excited about the students and families who have taken advantage of the program this summer. The Sumner Academy of Arts, Arts and Science Speech and Debate Team is currently in Lewisville, Kentucky, competing at the National Speech and Drama Tournament. This comes after this team took first place at the Acacia 5A State Tournament in May. So congratulations to Sumner students and good luck. KC KPS is excited to partner with Varsity Tutors to provide all K-212 students free online summer classes and camps. Varsity Tutors classes and camps are available now until September 22nd. Students interested in signing up for these programs must use clever to access Varsity Tutors application. Visit the KC KPS website for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Board and staff, I just want to thank you for a productive meeting yesterday going over the budget. And so I look forward to what we will continue to do there on the 30th. With that, I don't have anything else to add. Board?
Just want to acknowledge the great work that was done by the library for the summer reading at the Boulevard Theater on June 2nd. Janie and myself were there. The weather was perfect, and we had an opportunity to see the students engaged in getting books as well as playing on some of the area where they had the toys. And of course, there was a mermaid floating through the air. But it was a very excellent activity for them. And also, in relation to what the Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, I want to say thank you to Jared Alexander, Cameron Porter, Sarah Thacker, Alexis Salinas, Edwin Birch, and Sam Marie Devon, and all of the others who volunteered to help to make the retirement excellent. It was done in great taste despite what we've been dealing with. Everybody really enjoyed it again and wanted to say thank you.
Other members?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the retirement as well, and just want to congratulate everyone. It is a good feeling when you come to the end of the road and you know you've done all you can. And we have some excellent employees, and I wish we could give them more, but at this time, we gave our best. So hopefully, next year, we can do even better. I also had the opportunity on the 7th of June to attend the Social Justice Ministries Program, which dealt with violence in our community and our world, as well as housing. And we have, a lot of our families have been affected by that, and it's important. I saw Ms. Drew, Dr. Nguyen, and Ms. Russell there as well. So, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, we missed each other.
Okay. But it's just good that we were there, and we need to be there to support this because we're struggling with housing, and it's getting hot, it gets cold, and people outdoors, and it shouldn't be. And if we have any sense of humanity, it's important that we be there and try to understand what's going on, and with the violence as well. We gotta do something. And our kids have just been inundated with that. So we need to be there to support our communities. And it was good to see all the different churches, races, what have you. People were there and supporting. So hopefully, we'll get an end result. Something will happen, something will change. And that was special, so I enjoyed that.
Good evening. I just wanted to recognize that June is Pride Month, so I just wanted to say happy Pride Month. Let us understand that love is love, even if it comes in different forms. So celebrating with all of those who recognize this month and just know that I am very supportive of Pride Month. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, and congratulations to all the retirees as well. Excuse me, I will attend the Ailey Camp Open House tomorrow at Carl Bruce at 8:30 a.m. And then there is a public forum on the 25th, 9:30, 11:30 a.m., sponsored by the Voter Rights Network of Wyandotte County. I believe it's at Memorial Hall. I need to check the venue. But there will be a session on public education. Thank you.
Thank you. We're lots of good updates. Thank you all for sharing. We will now move into our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before we move, I would like to remove item F.
Okay, removing item F. Okay, anything else? All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
I'm sorry. We need to have discussion. I apologize. I move right on into roll call. Ms. Russell?
Oh, we discuss item F.
Any discussion around?
This is just on the rest of the consent agenda first, and then take up item F after that.
Okay, thank you. All right, if no discussion, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so I will then entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. We just did that.
That's what we did.
Discussion.
This is...
Sorry.
You can either take a motion and then do a discussion on item F, or you can just ask Ms. Russell what...
Okay, that's where I skipped to the first time. I apologize.
I'm making a motion?
No.
You can do it one of two ways. Typically, you have the motion, the second, then you have discussion. However, if you've just got a question or concern about item F that you want to ask, you could go ahead and do that.
Okay. So I guess I just have a concern about item F. It is an investment of $100,000. And after reviewing the PowerPoint that was presented to us, I still am very unclear of the purpose of these dollars and how they are being utilized. I didn't see anything specific to Red Apple in those presentations. Attend to achieve, which I think is the overarching, I just need a lot of clarity before I feel comfortable saying, yes, let's move forward again and spend $100,000 because I'm just not sure that it's an efficient way to utilize staff and not trying to micromanage, but just I am not clear of what the purpose of attendance clerks are, what the purpose of having a coordinator is, if those are duplicated services in $100,000 MOU. And if those dollars, as I asked in my question, could be better utilized in incentives or peer-to-peer mentoring in other ways versus staff time and staff people to improve attendance outcomes.
So the first thing that Madison, or I think Lisa may be on there as well, the attendance clerks and what they do are two different things. The attendance clerks put inner data, manage, make sure the attendance is entered correctly. They are not engaged with students and family behind the why. That's more of a secretarial duty, and that's primarily their responsibility. So their job responsibilities are not the same. So, but I'll let them...
So attendance clerks put in attendance all day long? I guess what does their eight-hour day consist of if it's not follow-up?
They are not having the counseling conversations and connecting people with social workers. So all day long, people are calling, excusing, or making up, or cleaning up attendance. If you're at the high school level, you are running attendance or middle school. Every hour, there could be somebody who didn't enter attendance, somebody who is skipping, somebody who is missing. It's those technical parts that an attendance clerk would be following up on. They wouldn't be meeting with, Anna, you've been out for seven days. Is there something going on? Or following up and connecting with teachers. They really, literally are trying to make sure we have students where they're supposed to be throughout the day because unfortunately, students are always not where they are and/or if there are substitutes, or teachers get busy, or fall behind. Attendance may not get entered accurately. So they're following up on those kind of technical pieces, not this on, why are you not in attendance?
And Dr. Stubblefield, I can step in a little bit and try to answer some questions. I know Lisa Garcia Stewart isn't on with us this evening, but I'll try my best. So the Red Apple Company, along with Attendance Works, which is a nationally recognized company for assisting school districts and state agencies with helping with chronic absenteeism, have been partnering with us this past year as part of our work to address chronic absenteeism, which is part of our KISA work as well. The work that Red Apple Company is doing, they're not specifically working just with attendance clerks. As Dr. Stubblefield says, their role is a little bit different, ensuring that students are entered in properly, all those different pieces. One of the things we're doing with Red Apple Company and Attendance Works is we're working with building attendance teams. And those attendance teams comprise of social workers, counselors, the attendance clerk is a part of that conversation, principals, and then there might be some other folks that are part of those as well. Those are the boots-on-the-ground kind of folks that are helping address, you know, when students are, we're noticing trends when students aren't showing up to school, that they are the ones that go out, do the home visits, they do the phone calls, the letters to families. We're really trying to focus on those kids that are moderately at risk and high at risk for chronic absenteeism because those are the students that will fall behind, they'll fall further behind in their academics. So these teams are working on plans on how to address getting kids to come back to school. Dr. Kia Turner, who is part of Red Apple Company, goes out with our Attend to Achieve Program Coordinator, which is Naomi Tellantino, and she goes and she works with these teams throughout the quarter to assist them with their planning processes.
So what is the...
So that's just a little bit more about the program that we're, or not program, the MOU and what we do with Dr. Turner and Red Apple.
So I guess like what is the baseline data that tells us that this is a responsible decision to spend $100,000 on and the outcomes?
So this past...
I could jump in there too, Matt.
Oh, thank you, Lisa, you're here, sorry.
Part of the data that we shared, Rachel, was at our quarterly data where we showed where we're currently working with those schools, that we started with our addressing our chronic absenteeism have been able to show at the baseline level because our work started with Attendance Works and Red Apple really early on when the MOU was approved in June. But we wanted to do some front-loading. So the work at the school level really began to take shape probably in October. So the data that we shared in our quarterly data showed that those schools that have been working with both Attendance Works and Red Apple had shown significant improvement in addressing their chronic absenteeism, which is the focus, as opposed to waiting until they are students that are truant. When we presented the MOU, we were able to, the first year, make that connection with the Greater Kansas City of United Way. And they provided the funding for that our first year to work both with Attendance Works and Red Apple Company that are addressing chronic absenteeism across the country. They're the level of experts that are able to help us really begin to get to the root cause analysis. And from that, not just working with those schools that we worked with this year, then we created our Data Dashboard Around Attendance, which Naomi Tellantino shared that leads the work with A to A in February. So it wasn't necessarily just the update from Red Apple. It was the overall work that we're doing to address chronic absenteeism to help meet that 95% attendance, average daily attendance target for our district. So those two partners, both Red Apple and Attendance Works, were presented as partners to use, while we have our community partnership dollars through our S R grants, and so, S R dollars. So that's what we submitted, and we've been working with them the last year. So we had two presentations on the update from our A to A team and then the presentation of the MOU that was approved last June of 2021 under all of the Greater Kansas City of United Way with Attendance Works and Red Apple Company.
Okay. All right, any other? Ms. Page, did you have any?
So we will, in the report that we saw, they said we get quarterly reports. And can we get, will it give us more detail in terms of how they're working with elementary, middle, and high schools, and what's working, what's not? A little bit more detail in the report.
Is Ms. Stewart on there?
Absolutely. I will look to Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Kamau. I know we gave our attendance report with the quarterly data, but if you want something separate, I'll defer to their guidance. But we did provide that when we were presenting the assessment data, the attendance data, discipline data. But it wasn't just solely that report on attendance, but we certainly can. And at any time, if it pleases the board, the consultants that we're working with can also come and share an update if that's helpful.
Yeah, that would help because like Ms. Clark, Ms. Russell, we want to make sure we're getting our bang for our buck. If we're paying this, we want to see some end result. You know, has the attendance approved? How are they helping families? Maybe they are struggling, they need some help. Will they do that? You know, I had a student once, we finally figured it out. Their water was cut off. So we were able to get them some help that way, and that way it helped the kids come to school. So I don't know if they're doing to that degree, but that's going to help them get there.
Absolutely. That's the part of the work that Matt just spoke about with the attendance teams, home visits, working with the leadership team, with the school behavioral health social workers and the counselors to really get down to that root cause, to make sure that we can provide and intervene and develop those tier-one interventions to help our students and our families to make sure that we're mitigating those issues that's preventing them from coming to school, those that are unexcused and excused. And that's that big window of that chronic absenteeism when parents are calling in, but what's really the reason why they're calling in, and how can we provide that level of support?
Okay, Ms. Drew?
Madam Vice President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Renewal Memorandum of Understanding with Red Apple and Company. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any...
Just a question. What budget does this come out of?
It's currently coming out of our partnerships from S R dollars. There was an amount that was allocated for community partnerships to address any learning loss or attendance and those kind of things. So it's coming out of S R dollars.
So in the future, if we continue it, what budget would it come out of?
That's what we would have to make a determination. So either more likely the student service budget or some budget. But right now, it's coming from S R dollars, and we would collect the data to see if there was enough impact for us to carve it out of the budget in the future, or it would end. And the goal would be the teams that they're working with, that they would be able to continue that practice without having to have the partnership. So it's to build and develop the skill set of the teams because the teams consist of our employees. So they're teaching those strategies and those kind of things. So that would be the hope.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other comments? If not, Ms. Smith, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Next on our agenda, Board, I'd like to ask you to accept this information as an information item, the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Director's Report as submitted by Ms. Carol Levers.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Good evening, Board. Dr. Stubblefield. Just want to share some statistics with you. I'm not sure if it's something that you're interested, but just wanted to show you. This last month, we've checked out 38,524 items, and we put on hold 5,198 interlibrary loans for our patrons. And you could see our e-card signup, reading entertainment services, and searches, database services, searches and views, and also our sessions. That's right up there, usual. Statistics, school was a little bit down. We had 39,704 items checked out in the schools. 36,000 came from... 36,000 came from the elementary schools, 2,000 items in middle school, and 1,356 in our high schools. As Ms. Drew mentioned, we had our summer reading kickoff, and that was June 2nd. We had about 630 patrons attending the kickoff. And we handed out about 180 signed copies from our author, David Mieres. He also, he didn't want to hand out the books. He had the staff hand out the books, because he wanted to draw some caricatures in the book for people, and they just loved it. I appreciate Ms. Drew and Ms. Humphries coming out to represent the Board, as well as the staff was excited to see you guys there. We also had the bookmobile there, and people were excited. A lot of people has never seen the bookmobile. I can't, you know, imagine, you're not. But a lot of people wanted to see what it looks like inside. And we had quite a few, weeded books that we, that people wanted to take home. And of course, that's the floating mermaid, as you can see, walking around. It was beautiful weather, that's the truth. We have an exhibition at the, called, it's Photographs Along the Underground Railroad. And that will start, that's a typo, it's supposed to start June 15th, which is ready at the West Wyandotte Library, and it's going to be there through August 10th. We have beautifully dramatic color photographs, and filmira, and narratives that together tell the story of the Underground. I just wanted to read something of that for you. The photographer, Janine McNair Bales, has spent more than a decade researching and documenting roughly 2,000 miles of actual sites, cities and places that freedom seekers pass through during their journey. This exhibition features beautifully dramatic color photographs, and filmira, and narratives that together tell the story of the Underground Railroad. It will be on display at the West Wyandotte Library. But we also have two highlighted programs that go with this display. The one will be Quandero History with Nedra Barnes, 6:30 PM, June 23rd, and that will be at the West Wyandotte Library. And she's a fiber artist. Ms. Barnes will discuss the history of the Quandera Township and neighborhood. One of her best-known works is her Quandera quilt, which illustrates the history of old Quandera and its role in the Underground Railroad. The second program is Righteousness and Mammon, Quandera in Bleeding Kansas and the Civil War. That will be a virtual program, and it'll be 7:00 PM, July 7th. Dr. Nicole Etchison will present on the history of the Quandera Township and the town's role in Bleeding Kansas and the Civil War. She is a professor at Ball State and the author of Bleeding Kansas: Contested Liberty in the Civil War Era.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Levers, for always providing great information. We love to see how the library's doing. All right, so Board, next on our agenda is community comments. I don't see any community comments, but to our community, just a reminder that if you ever want to be on the agenda, we do ask that you contact our Board Secretary no later than noon of the day prior to the board meeting, so that we can get you, that we can get you added.
Yes. I make a motion that we accept the public library report.
Okay.
I second it.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Are we good with community comments? Next up, Board, are our Board Updates and Approvals. This is, these are things that have been brought before the Board before. And so I will move into, into motions.
Move to approve the emergency replacement of rooftop unit and air handler at Banneker Elementary.
All right. Ms. Smith, did you happen to get that? Okay. Do you mind repeating?
I moved to approve the emergency replacement of the rooftop unit and air handler at Banneker Elementary.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments?
All right. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So second, we have a motion that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education accept the bid from the Kansas City Wendelson Company in the amount of $58,800, as submitted by Wayne Correll, Director of Purchasing.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from the Board?
Now, this is item B, right?
Item B, yes.
Okay.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right. And so lastly here, we have that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approved the proximity learning, as submitted by Dr. Judith Campbell, Associate Superintendent of Leadership and Learning, as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All right, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Board. So next up, we have our new business. These are things that we're not asking that the Board take action on tonight, but we accept them as information, as an information item for recommendation for future.
So I will share, and Dr. Campbell, you can jump in at any point. The first item is the Student Analytics from Frontline Education. We have a couple of products from them, but one of the things that a couple of times the Board has talked about tonight is the data and how frequently and cleanly receiving the data. And this was a product that, as we looked at, that will help us to replace some of the things that our data department and others have to do manually, in order for us to be able to present the data to the Board and to the public in a user-friendly manner, on a real-time basis, because the data is updated on a, can be pulled and updated on a nightly basis.
I guess my only question, not related to this one, but related to frontline, I believe at some point, there was a conversation around, there was a frontline software we also needed in human resources to, for the same things that you're talking about, for student data that is needed in human resources. Has that been looked into? Will that come, will it all sync together at some time, so that people aren't manually entering some of the stuff that was mentioned before, that also?
So in human resources, we currently use frontline, and Sarah, you could tell me if I missed it. We currently use frontline to track our attendance absences for certified staff and administrators and classified staff. We also use frontline for our professional development learning. So adding the student portion will allow us to do some cross-reference around if these students, this group of students are not doing well, they didn't, you know, the teacher was out, or that kind of thing. We'll be able to pull that. But there is another layer that then you can pull the return on investment, and that's more, that's a finance component. You will get some of the clear return on investment, just based off of those two, for staff who are in the system, who are directly connected to students. But it can, on the finance side, drill down even further. One of the things we haven't had an opportunity to explore is to, if we were to bring that on, what products in finance that are not translating, and we haven't had time to do that portion. But we did have that larger discussion, yes.
Okay.
The funding for this is coming from our S R funds, right?
For this initial contract, yes. And then after we see how it works and it can be used, we would be able to build it into the budget, because there are some other products that we have that would expire. Our contracts would expire, and we'd be able to replace.
Any other questions? All right. As a reminder, that is information only. So, letter B?
Letter B is in agreement with Greenbush. And again, this is another organization that we have a few contracts or partnerships with. But we're required by KSDE for administrators and certain number of years to provide mentorship and to track it and professional learning around that. We have been using a variety of different sources, and it varies from level to level or school to school. This was a way, as Dr. Campbell and Lindsay Snyder looked at it, to streamline it, so that we can collect data around the professional learning and the requirements from KSD. We are required annually to provide information on how we are providing mentorship, to mentorship and professional learning to new administrators and administrators who are moving to different certifications at different times.
I got a question.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we've been, in what format do we provide the report?
For KSDE?
Uh huh.
They sent, this year, it was my first year filling it out, they sent a document, and we had to fill out how we were providing it, the number of people, the number of people requirement, who provided the service and what it looked like. It was, it was in a Google sheet that they sent to the superintendent, and I had to fill out and send back to them.
So no, no evaluation is conducted? It's just a recording?
That, to ensure that you're doing it. I mean, that's what it was this year, yes.
Thank you.
Well, let me follow up. Would then this be more robust than just checking a box?
Yes. This, well, for KSDE, they will still be checking a box. What it will, for us, is to ensure that the things that they are asking, that we know are happening consistently for all of our administrators that need it.
So I guess the real question is, if, so what happens to the leadership training? The real question is, if they are successful, if they, they struggle, what, what happens?
So Greenbush will give us, so their courses and things that they have to go through. My previous experience with partners like Greenbush, they give you feedback, and sometimes they'll say, you may want to look at this individually very closely, because some of the points that administrators should be having or grasping, they may need more coaching, or you may need to evaluate the situation. They'll give you some feedback around that if they see that there are some gaps there, or some deeper things. But they don't come in and say, this person doesn't qualify to be an administrator. That's what we would be responsible for, for whomever is evaluating those individuals.
So we have a separate evaluation tool?
Yes. This is not their evaluation. This is the professional learning, coaching and mentorship.
Right, I understand that. But do you use any of it for evaluation, or it's just what it is, standalone?
No, it's standalone, but they, you, it's additional information. Typically, they just go through the process. If there are things that are just huge red flags, they may tell you about it, but it's not a part of their, the evaluation process.
Just a newbie question. Greenbush, I thought they use a Florida curriculum. So I guess I'm trying to understand how?
For students, they may use Florida Virtual School. This is for administrators. So they have former principals or former administrators who do the courses and professional learning around being a good principal, or if you're a district office administrator, here are the things that you need. This is for administrators. For students, they, I think they may use Florida Virtual School, which is very different. So they have a lot of different ways that they partner.
So the curriculum that is tailoring them to get their professional license for KSDE is tailored to actual needs of, to meet that standard for getting?
Yes, for the mentorship, yeah.
Thank you, that's the word. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Board. So the ask, the ask today is that you accept these as informational items, and these items will come back before the Board for approval. So if you have any questions or comments, please make sure you get those sent in, so that Dr. Stubblefield and her staff can get those things answered for you. Thank you. Next up is our Board Reports. So the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education accepts all informational, all informational items with the Wyandotte County Comprehensive Special Education.
Dr. Laurie and her team will come forward, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Vice President Clark, Dr. Stubblefield, and all Board members. I first would like to take a moment to acknowledge the Wyandotte Comprehensive Special Education Cooperative Board, Dr. Stubblefield representing Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, Dr. Dana Piper School District, and Superintendent Brongard of Bonner Springs Edwardsville School District, and my state mentors, Neil, Doug, and Elena, for their support and guidance throughout my first full year as the Executive Director of Special Education for the Wyandotte Our special education mission and vision is for all students in Kansas City, Kansas. Our special education priorities are aligned to Kansas City, Kansas Public School Strategic Plan and their priorities. Our sped report this evening focuses on the Kansas City, Kansas Public School District's data, which has been used to inform decisions and guide my actions. You will also hear from two members of my executive team, Compliance Officer Doritah Henry and Assistant Director of Special Education Dana Nelson. And they will provide an overview of various components and highlights of the special education aligned to our sped priorities. I would like to start by sharing some general information regarding the numbers of students being served in the Kansas City, Kansas Public School District. We currently have 3,725 students being served, and roughly an additional 1,000 students served in our membership districts. IDEA students are students with disabilities, which account for 16.40 population in Kansas City, Kansas. 1.21% represents our gifted students. When examining the graph depicted on this slide, 6% of our IDEA students have a disability category of a learning disability. And our second largest category is students who need speech and language services. I would like to draw your attention to the category DD, which stands for developmentally delayed. Students who receive this classification are our students that come to us as early as three years old, and maintain that classification into elementary school. By the age of 10, students must be reevaluated and reclassified into a different eligibility category. Over the next few slides, I will review trend data Over the next few slides, I will review trend data analysis for the state indicators that determines compliance for the state level of determination. I have used the district's trend data analysis to review, assess, plan, and put into action some, some of the changes that needed immediate attention. The clustered indicators that you see here are based on the 1920 school year data. Green demonstrates compliance, yellow represents approaching compliance but not yet achieved, and red represents substantial non-compliance. Special education graduation rates and dropout rates met compliance for the first time since 2009 and 2010 school year. Indicator 4A is significant discrepancy in the rate of the suspensions and expulsions of greater than 10 days in a school year for any student with an IEP. Indicator 4B is significant discrepancy by race and ethnicity for the rate of suspensions and expulsion greater than 10 days for any student with an IEP. Indicator 4B also looks at our policies, procedures, and practices that contribute to significant discrepancy and do not comply with requirements relating to the development and the implementation of the IEP and the use of positive behavior interventions and support along with procedure safeguards. Indicator 3 here examines state assessments in reading and math for students with disabilities. It is the percentage of special education students who actually participate in the assessment, and is also the proficiency and the performance of reading and math. And during the 1920 school year, the state did not collect assessment data. And for the federal fiscal year 2020, the state changed the way that they collect this data for special education. And in the 2021 school year, 4th grade, 8th grade, and high school grades are calculated separately. Participation in state assessments did not meet compliance for those grade levels. However, those students who did take the assessments, those in the 8th grade and in the high school grades did show proficiency in reading and math rate against the grade level academic achievement standards to compare to their same grade level peers in this district. For our students who take the alternative state assessment, they also calculate 4th grade, 8th grade, and high school grades for reading and proficiency, and we did not meet compliance based on the 2021 school year data. However, the data does show that we are closing the gap between special education students and their gen ed peers in math and reading in the district, which does present a positive perspective on achievement data for selected groups. But in all grades, we will need to have a focus on instruction, and it starts with improved Tier 1 instruction in which the district is focusing their efforts through MTSS. Indicator 5 is about the placements where we serve students in special education. The indicator data is based on the 2021 school year. A is the percent of children who are ages 5 through 21 that are served in the regular education environment at least 80% of their day. B are students who are served in the regular education environment less than 40% of their day. This is an area of focus, where we need to provide more opportunities for our students who are served in self-contained environments, more time to be in the general education classroom, even if it's for electives or for specials or just a part of the core content areas. In providing more oversight and training for our SPED teachers and our building leaders on the importance of all students having access to the general edu, excuse me, general education classrooms, I anticipate improvement in this area over the next two data cycles. And C are those students that are served in their home, are in a residential facility or a separate school like Bridges, Lake Mary, or Summit, and schools like that. Indicator 6 examines early childhood special, special education program. This particular indicator specifically looks at the least restrictive environment, that's the LRE on the screen there. A is the percent of preschool students with an IEP who attend the early childhood program but are receiving majority of their special education services inside that regular early childhood program. And to be compliant, we need to be over 37.36%, as we have consistently been over that, that state target. B is the percentage of preschool students who are getting services in a special education class. To be compliant, the percentage must be under the state target of 39.36% for that compliance. Right now, we have very few students receiving specially designed instruction in a special education classroom. And based on this trend data, we can provide students who present themselves with more significant needs entering into the early childhood special education program more specialized instruction to increase their outcome, and we would still remain in compliance with the state threshold. And C, those are our preschool students who are receiving services at home, and anything under 1.98% is compliant for the state. And as you see, we're currently not serving any students in that capacity. Indicator 7, still examining early childhood special education performance data. It's information about whether our students who are entering to our special education early childhood program, if they are exiting that program with the necessary skills to enter kindergarten ready. And for the federal fiscal year 2020, this data is based on the 2021 school year. The state looks at three outcomes. A, positive social-emotional skills, including social relationships. B, acquisization of you, of use of knowledge and skills, which is including our early language, communication, and our early literacy. And it looks at C, the use of appropriate behaviors to meet needs. Are the behaviors within age of expectations? The state looks further at early childhood performance data, and they look at compliance in two different ways. So that statement one listed in the bottom of the slide, that is about the rate of growth. Special education preschool students that come into early childhood special education program who are below age expectations and make significant or substantial growth by the time they exit and go to kindergarten. So the question the data answers is, are students having significant growth in any of their outcomes once they exit the early childhood special education program and go to kindergarten? Our results over the past 11 years indicate that we have had four to five years in which we were found compliant with positive social-emotional skills, acquiring knowledge and skills, and use of appropriate behaviors. This is an area of focus when we think about how we are preparing our students for their educational journey. And then take a look at the summary statement two. That, that represents the percentage of special education preschool students, regardless of how they come to us, the percentage of special education students who leave the program and enter kindergarten functioning within the age expectations in each of the standards or outcomes that have been set forth by the state. Our results over the past 11 years indicate four years we were compliant for student behaviors being appropriate and within age expectation, and there were three years in which we were found compliant for positive social-emotional skills. However, over the past 11 years, the outcome for academics, acquiring knowledge and skills, the essential teaching and learning that happens in early childhood, we have never reached a level of compliance. We will need to have a focused vision on how to provide special education services to our students with disabilities and reimagine how that may look. And I am looking forward to collaborating and seeking additional guidance from Chris Anderson with the Buffett Early Childhood Institute and our KU partners. And I'm excited to work with district leaders and our building leaders. And I do have the utmost respect for our staff, who will have to make some adjustments and, and be able to make the necessary changes to provide our students with a better opportunity to be successful in their early years of education. And although I do understand that, that changes are hard, but we also can't ignore what our data says that we have been doing for the past 11 years. And so I, I, I am looking forward to looking at this data and making those collaborations with those that are coming in to partner with the Special Education Department. But I also know that the needs of our students and our parents have to be met, and I am confident that we can get to where we need to be, but together. Indicator 8 is about parent involvement. Each year, the state requires the LEA to provide a survey to our parents for them to share their perspective on how special education services are being delivered, and if they feel that they have meaningful participation in the IEP process. As a cooperative, and compared to our neighboring districts here, we have much improved rate for 2021 school year. And for any parents who are listening, I want to thank them for taking the time to fill out this survey. I know filling out these surveys are not always easy, but I appreciate the transparency in which our parents have shared their thoughts and feelings about how we serve their children. And I want to encourage parents to continue to reach out to myself and my SPED administration team anytime that they have questions or comments or concerns about special education services. The next five indicators that the state has clustered here are part of the state, the district's trend data. Indicator 9 is all about disproportionate representation of racial and ethnic groups who receive special education services that is the result of an inappropriate identification. Indicator 10 is the same representation of the racial and ethnic groups, and specifically the disability categories that students may be classified under, that is a result of an inappropriate identification. And Indicator 11 is the initial evaluations that must be completed within 60 school days for us to be compliant when we have our audits. So when our parents request evaluations, and once we gain that parent consent, we have 60 school days to complete that evaluation. And any file that is audited by the state and is audited every year, we are expected to meet those expectations. Indicator 12 are children who are being served in Part C, and Part C is the infant-toddler services. We serve those kids from birth to age three. KCKPS in the SPED department is the local agency for the infant-toddler services. And so by the time they leave Part C and come to Part B, they have to have an eligibility established and an IEP developed by that child's third birthday. If we are met, if we're not meeting that expectation, we are considered out of compliance. And then Indicator 13 is about our youth. Our students with IEPs who are age 16 or above, who have to have appropriate measurable post-secondary outcomes, they have to have the appropriate, age-appropriate assessment about transition, we have to be monitoring all of those things for our students who are in secondary education. So what the state does, we get a request, and they ask for random files. And so some of these indicators, one or two students who do not meet any of these expectations, we are considered out of compliance overall for that particular indicator. So in most cases, as you see on the screen, there is a lot of green. And so we have been compliant in these areas when it comes to those particular files. But what we have to do as the leaders in the Special Education Department, we have to look beyond the 25 files that are requested, and we have to look at all thousands of our children. And that is when you're able to see any gaps in the systems, and that's when you have to respond with process and procedures so that we're not only passing audits and showing green for those 25 kids, but we are doing that for all thousands of our students. And Indicator 14, once our students with IEPs graduate from school, the state still holds us accountable for a compliance for after, one year after they graduate. So Indicator 14A is the number of students who enroll in a higher education within one year of leaving high school. Indicator B are students who enroll in a higher education or competitively employed within one year after they graduate from high school. And C are students who are enrolled in a higher education and are in some other, like, post-secondary training program. And as you can see here on the data table, not every year the district has been selected to provide this data. But in the years we have been selected, we have not met compliance with our students falling in any of those three categories. So this is the year that we were asked to send data, so I sent that data on last week, and we will get those results next school year. Indicator 1516 is about resolution sessions and mediation, and I, I'm very proud that for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, I have not had to represent any cases as it relates to Indicator 15 and 16. The last component of the state level of determination is around timely and accurate data. The state changed its format, how, how they report timely and accurate data to the LEAs, but they have not changed how they assess us for these particular indicators. So each question focuses around the accurate number of December account for students of December 1 and the end of their reporting, is accurately exiting students in a timely manner when they transfer out of our district or if they graduate? And it also counts for the LEA simply following directions that the state has outlined to ensure that we have systems in place to meet compliance. Our 2021 timely and accurate data here looks very good for the past few years. However, we did not meet under this 2020, we did not meet state compliance for timely and accurate data. We only received 16 points out of the 23 possible points. However, I anticipate after the two data cycles, we will have made substantial progress in this area due to the oversight and accountability with our new systems and procedures that we have in place now, and I am looking forward to sharing that information in future Board Reports with you. Overall, to have a compliant state level of determination, all of the indicators that I just briefly took us all through are all factored in to determination. And if you see here, if you have one area that is out of compliance, it could impact your overall level of state compliance for each individual district. And as you see in our trend data, KCKPS at the, on the very far right side, the level of determination, we have struggled to meet all the requirements for compliance level of determination since 2013. However, I do remain very positive that we have a great administration team who can lead us to a higher level of compliance, and we will continue to evaluate our process and our procedures to ensure compliance, and we will have an impact on the social-emotional and the academic outcomes for all students, early childhood to 21 with disabilities. Now, I would like to shift your attention to SPED discipline data for Kansas City, Kansas Public School District. This is a definition taken right out of our state process handbook, and I have shared this information with our district leaders and our building leaders. SPED has the responsibility for identification and placement of children with disabilities. And when it comes to the disciplinary actions, including suspensions and expulsions, it is critical that race and ethnicity does not lead to significant disproportionate practices. This slide explains how the state can find the district out of compliance for significant disproportionality. So the state examines discipline risk ratio, which is the risk of something happening to one group compared to the risk of something happening to another group. And in this case, we're talking about ISS, OSS, and overall suspension. And the state's threshold for compliance is 3.0. And the state's threshold for compliance is 3.0. Here is the data table for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Risk Factor for all ethnic groups for suspensions for students with disabilities. You will notice that Black students with disabilities have been identified as out of compliance with exceeding the state's threshold of 3.0. The risk factors mean Black students with disabilities are over five times more likely to receive out-of-school suspension 10 days or fewer, in-school suspension 10 days or fewer, or be completely removed from the classroom compared to the other students with disabilities in other ethnic groups. The data is from the 2021 school year, when we were not attending brick and mortar for the majority of the year. And each building's data was submitted to the state by the last day of June, and the results came back this year in February. For this current school year, 2122, students with disabilities had already reached 1,200 suspensions by February of this year, before any immediate actions were developed and implemented at the district and building levels. And in all transparency, I do believe the district's data could come back where our risk ratio is still above the state's threshold for 3.0 for Black students with disabilities. However, we will not know this impact until we receive the results next school year in February, which could be counted two out of the three consecutive years, making the 2022-23 school year the most critical for monitoring significance disproportionality. We must start in the next school year with a different approach to how buildings address discipline for students. This is a very serious matter. And to make improvements in this area, we do have to examine what is happening with teaching, learning, supporting social and emotional needs of students, and our own adult behaviors on how we respond when students are not making the appropriate choices. I do believe that the district has planned a response to this need to approach discipline from a different perspective going into the new school year. We have developed, the board has approved, the new student code of conduct. We have a clear focus on restorative practices in helping students to recover from their actions and the choices that lead to violations of the code of conduct. And with positive behavior supports being in place in every building, where we reward students who are making good choices and where we teach and model the desired behaviors that we want all students to demonstrate. In order for our restorative approach to be effective, we will need an increased level of parent engagement and parent involvement. I want to be very clear. No one has said or is saying that we cannot suspend students. But what is being said is there will need to be some intentionality on how we respond to students when their choices do not align to our expectations. If we are able to implement restorative practices in this approach on day one in our next school year, it will have a tremendous impact and benefit for all students around social, emotional health, and academic achievement. At this time, I would like to bring up our compliance officer, Doretha Henry, to provide an overview on student data compliance.
Hello, Vice President Clark, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, and all board members. I will review the various roles that support and impact our student data for compliance. MIS, which stands for Management Information Systems, data specialists, or a team of three that are the liaison between the student IEPs and the state compliance systems. These individuals work with each district board clerks to correct building settings and calendar years. They develop departmental relationships by collaborating with others to fix student data errors. They help create systems to improve the import and export of student data. All of this gives the accurate data that is needed to help with timely and accurate reporting. Two very important tasks that our MIS data assistant do is our December 1 count and the end-of-year count. These counts are used for our funding for state and federal aid. Help us recognize discrepancies and allow me to create processes and procedures that will help us stay in compliance with the state of Kansas. This graph is for the exits of our sped students that had not been exited prior to our December 1 count for our timely and accurate report. With the processes and procedures that we have in place, we are able to track the number of exits month-to-month and account for the numbers of students that left, which in return allow for us to stay abreast of those students who have left our district and determine students who were possibly missed. Medicaid specialists. Our Medicaid specialists are responsible for state funding or related, I'm sorry, state funding for our related service providers and school psychologists. The Random Moment Time Study Reminders, they complete annual transportation logs, which aids for our reimbursements, and completes Medicaid state aid replacements, which also aids for our reimbursements. The graph depicts the reimbursements that we were able to recruit with our processes and procedures that were created for our magic claiming window from March 23rd to April 13th. School year 2021, we were able to recruit an unduplicated number of 896. This school year for 2022, we were able to recruit the number of 994, which is way more than we had from the last prior year. Next is our Secretary of Student Information Management. She is responsible for trackable systems for sending, receiving, and requesting records, helping families retain or get disability aid for their students by sending off records to the Kansas Office of Disability Determination Services. She works with the district attorney's office for any records and subpoena requests, and she helped with the child find process. So when a parent referral is received, the parent receives a prompt request. I'm sorry, a prompt response. The graph accounts for the month-to-month parent referrals for this 2022 school year. Not only do we have a trackable system in place, but we are able to make sure that parents' concerns and needs are being addressed. I would like to thank you for your time. And next is our Assistant Director of Special Education, Dana Nelson.
Vice President Clark, Superintendent Stubblefield, KCKPS Board members, good evening.
Good evening.
And greetings to all of our family and friends that are part of our KCKPS educational family. My name is Dana Nelson, and I am the Assistant Director. And today, I'm pleased to share a year in review as it relates to our instructional, professional development, and staffing outcomes and trends, and discuss the promising future for special education in KCKPS. All right, for 2021-22 school year, this is where the I in IEP is essential. There's not a one-size-fits-all approach to our instructional delivery models. We offer specially-designed instruction across different placements of classes and settings as documented in the IEP. For most of our students, as you know, and what Dr. Lowry had shared earlier, most of our students are serviced in the general education setting. So let's review those instructional models that we are using to intentionally enhance achievement for students. First, we use co-teaching, not only at the secondary level, but we're looking forward to advancing that to our elementary level more intentionally. We work with our special education teachers, as well as their general education partners, with training across four models that are effective in co-teaching, namely, the station, parallel, alternative, and our teaming approach. Also, our peer professionals are involved with our collaborative class teaching model. And in secondary, we also offer direct instruction for our middle and high school students around ELA and math. And this is where we have small classes so we can address those high-yield GVCs and scaffold instruction for those students in a pull-out model. We also offer academic support, which is part of that transition planning that Dr. Lowry mentioned. It helps our students organize themselves with their executive functioning skills, learn self-advocacy, and also look at study skills that are enhancing what they do with their IEPs. We also have our specialized programs that are sales and life skills, our steps for autism, and also our classes that are there to support our medically fragile students. They participate and receive their instructional model through the ULS. The ULS is the unique learning system, which provides functional and academic skills using current events. 220 of our students receive access to that with 43 of our teachers providing support through that tool. All right, so you can see in our graph here, we have some of the data from our Kansas State Assessment. These are the results from spring 2021. Of course, we don't have our results completed yet, but we know that our students had a year of interrupted learning. Our team, though, has used this data to address some of the learning loss that children experience and strategically respond to improve so that our students could have a more promising outlook post-COVID. State assessments, as you know, shouldn't be interpreted as an end-all-be-all indicator of academic abilities. Remember, these scores are but one index or metric for student potential. As you can see, the scaled scores fall into one of four performance level categories based on the test assessment of a student's ability to understand and use these skills and knowledge for college and career readiness. The performance levels that are representative for ELA and math, on this slide, we see our math, and on the next, you'll see our ELA. We, of course, would like to see more gains in the areas where it's gold, green, and blue. And we see that our students, after that year of loss, they struggled a bit more, our students with special needs, on this assessment. So that gives us direction for where we need to go in terms of our instructional support for staff that will impact student outcomes. If you look at the ELA assessment, there's some really interesting pockets of success here. Although, of course, the numbers are not what we would hope for them to be. Of course, we want to close that achievement gap between our students receiving special education services and their general education peers. But interestingly enough, the trend for 2021 with our students, we had some modest gains there, but our scores were actually better than what the state's scores had been for students with disabilities. Over and beyond, most of the students had much alarming dives in their performance, and we actually made some modest gains. So that's an area for us to dig a little bit more deeply into to find out what contributed to those particular aspects of support. Here, we also look at some of the predictive tools that have been provided by the state as some of our best practice indices for how students are predicted to perform. We do this for our math and for our ELA. This number looks at our students, of course, who were screened with Fastbridge, who have been identified for special education services. You'll notice the number of students averages right around 630 if you look at the fall and the spring. Of course, if you remember what Dr. Lowry said earlier, we have 3,700 students that are in our district, and many of whom would fall into the category of students who would be able to take this screening assessment. So of course, although it is a snapshot in about 20% of our population, which some people would say is a great sample, we want to know what all of our students know when they know it so that we can make really informed educational and instructional decisions. So we, of course, want to improve the number of students who are participating in that screening, and we are hopeful that that will happen. Part of this was, of course, after COVID, and trying to get students screened and tested was very difficult. But we know that we're able to come up with some strategies and partnering to ensure that more of our students are screened in future years. So we know that behavior and instruction go hand in hand. And so, two of the different enhancements that we did this year was to develop our behavior support team. This was a model that helped us support students who were in some of our specialized programs. And many of those evaluations and responses for requests for support came from those specialized programs. Although that support is available to all teams and teachers in special education, we saw that some of these challenges were happening more likely in those specialized program settings. And so, when a referral is received, the team is dispatched to provide observational support for students in different settings across different times. We want to get a picture of the whole child, not just the child at the place or the setting that seems to be the issue or the concern. Then, we have BCBAs, which are our behavior-certified persons who are highly skilled in being able to address those behavior needs with the support of our RBTs, which are Registered Behavior Technicians, along with some of our staff instructional coaches, as well as our sped coordinators, who are highly skilled in the area of behavior. We make those recommendations and support the teams through that improvement process and even developing better IEP goals to help address student needs. The other support that we created this year was the Autism Interdisciplinary Support Team. We also know that students who have autism or have been identified as having autism have really unique needs, and every single child is very different. And so, it requires a team of people with a high skill set that can really address those needs in the context where the behaviors are happening. Of the 22 responses for support that we received, they were all from those specialized classrooms, which gives us an indicator of where we need to go with our additional professional development. Just because you're working and assigned to one of those specialized programs doesn't mean that you are instantly an expert. And so, we are here to help our teachers, our peer professionals, and our specialized staff support people be able to address these concerns as meaningfully as they can so that we can see the reduction in these behaviors. So if you know anything about the continuum of services that we provide in special education, this past April, you missed a real treat. We had our Gifted Education Team hosted for our Quest Elementary Learners, a project-based learning expo and showcase. As some of you were there, the board president, our board members were there, our superintendent, associate superintendent, many families, lots of siblings. It was quite a wonderful event for our students to really help us journey into the unexplained enigmas, as well as looking at our STEM and STEAM-based exploration of science with their roller coaster builds. We hope that you'll look forward to joining us next year for this particular showcase. It was really exciting for the students and for all of the adults, I believe, that were there as well. So when we think about how we want to address these instructional needs, not just for all of our learners that are the ones that seem or appear to have the most instructional academic needs, but those with behavioral needs, and those that are also demonstrating exceptionality who need to be challenged further. Well, one thing that we have in our program here is our sped instructional coaches, a wonderful team of what I call pedagogical experts. They really understand what good teaching looks like, and especially when it comes to addressing the needs of students with disabilities and exceptionalities. We've set our own goal that we'd like to see an increase across our baseline of 10% for those achievement scores as measured on our state exams. Some of the resources that we utilize, and we saw a great gain this particular year. Although Goalbook had already been in place prior to Dr. Lowry's arrival and my arrival, this year, we saw some really significant gains. Even the vendor who helps to support us reminded us that at the mid-year point, we typically see a gain of accessing this tool of only 25. By the time we made the midpoint, we were at 39,570, which is really, really an exceptional amount. We cannot do this work alone. We know that our sped coordinators, as well as our instructional coaches, and then also the collaboration with other teams within our leadership and learning really helped to push this tool forward so that we could really help students gain more access to the general education curriculum and allow teachers to be more creative, not just in academics, but also in the social, emotional components. All teachers and all staff in our district are able to access this tool. So it's not just for sped. We like to share the love and share the resources because they're all our students. Another one of the resources that we created was our sped instructional hub. We thought that it was important, post-COVID-19, to really look at some more relevant ways to engage people with technology, as well as with some of these digital resources. This is our one-stop-shop resource for not only special educators, but also general educator partners for best practices in special education. It's interactive, and it's always changing, so we ask people to visit often to look and see what they can discover that's new. We also like to celebrate our staff that we see and catch doing the right thing. We have staff shout-outs. So if you want to go look and see what we see our peer professionals doing, it's amazing that we see our teachers and our principals in schools that are supporting special education students. We always want to focus on what's good and what we want to see as a model. We lean very heavily into the work of Marilyn Friend. She is one of the seminal and key people that's pushed forward co-teaching, former CEC Council for Exceptional Children President, and has authored many books in this area and has demonstrated that co-teaching really allows, as we showed in our indicator report, that students need more access to that general education setting and that curriculum. that students need more access to that general education setting and that curriculum. All right, so we know that great organizations and wise leaders become great at developing great people. We recognize their efforts, we support them through professional growth opportunities. Our students in K C K are entitled to have a high-performance workforce. So at the beginning of every year, we have our SPED Kickoff and Professional Development Series. You can see photographed here our YCO Board of Directors, and we also have all of our staff from the Yandotte Comprehensive SPED Cooperative. Dr. Lowry shared information about the status of YCO, but also motivated the staff and set the tone with expectations for the work ahead. Our vision "Kids First" is internalized in the cooperative's culture and is central and critical element to a daily pedagogical and operational excellence. In order for us to meet the high calling of Kids First, we first need to equip our staff to do great work in the years to come. So as you can see, we try to develop our P D that is relevant, responsive, and reflects best practices in androgynous or adult education. For example, our training began this particular year in July. Prior to the start of school, we had staff that were eager to learn and come ahead of time to learn all about our new Compuse SPED system, which they had helped to select as part of our process last year. They were excited. We provided trainings that were not just for our special education team, but anyone who was interested in learning more about Compuse SPED and its functions were invited to attend. We also continue with professional development on Goalbook, our four co-teaching models, specially-designed instruction, high-fidelity data collection, crisis prevention intervention, universal design, scaffolding instruction, self-care and wellness, autism best practices, supporting trauma-sensitive care, mandatory trainings for Medicaid and for our D L M, as well as our Child's Outcome Service findings. If you're just tired hearing that, imagine the work that went into doing it. But I promise you, it was a labor of love, and it was a collaborative effort with many people, bringing their best to the table to ensure that we gave our best to our staff. We also provided training for our principals to help them become empowered as the L E A, so the leader in you, and the role for L E As in that SPED process. We also partnered with Student Services, looking at how special education programming with Truancy and McKinney Vento can work together to help mediate and try to get rid of some of those issues that we saw that our students were facing that were unique to special education. We also received the PSYOP training through E L L and our federal programs mandated reporting training. Our SPED instructional coaches also decided they wanted to do their own book study and looked at and examined a book, Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, by Zaretta Hammond. We were very busy, but it was, again, a labor of love, so that we could make sure that the work that we do, as Dr. Campbell would say, is not being accomplished by working in silos and that we have to really connect with one another. When adults are included, who are advocating for students who need to be included, then we know that we can have positive outcomes for all. So we had very strategic collaborations with all of the departments within the Leadership and Learning Team so that we can make this dream a reality. Here we also, as they say, if you don't feed the teachers, they eat the children. Well, if you don't feed the leaders, they eat the teachers, right? So what we do is we try to make sure that we're also always providing for the leaders within our SPED teams some really exceptional learning opportunities. Greatness is achieved by making sure that we're developing all of ourselves and all of our personnel professionally. And so as you can see here, the KISA, which was, it's a little bit K C, which is the Winter Conference for Special Education Leaders in the State, and Dr. Lowry is actually invited to join their leadership to advocate for the full and equitable funding of special education directly with our state legislators as part of that weekend. So that was a really wonderful surprise opportunity that she was able to engage in on our behalf. This is one of our proudest accomplishments, although there are many things that we can celebrate over the last very busy year, one of which was our inaugural Parent Empowerment and Transition Fair. As parents and family members of children and adults with disabilities ourselves in our SPED leadership team, we understand how disempowering the journey from evaluation to transition can feel. We want to ensure that our parents are empowered, informed, and organized, so they can participate fully in the school community. It means embracing the belief that all voices and perspectives are welcome in our classroom and in our district and intentionally providing space for those voices to be heard. Our Parent Empowerment and Transition Fair, birthed from just a simple conversation that one of our SPED coordinators was having with a parent organizer in the community, grew into twenty-four families being present, and over ten transition community partners were there as well. So have you heard of the Great Resignation of two thousand twenty-one? Well, if you haven't heard of it, you sure felt it. This was a term that was given to the mass exodus of maybe forty-seven million U.S. workers in two thousand twenty-one, who resigned, and then even in March of two thousand twenty-two, there was a record-setting four-point-two million who resigned across the United States. Education as a field has not been spared the impact of these resignations and early retirements. But as Henry Ford said, "Don't find fault, find a remedy." Anyone can complain. So instead of complaining, instead of finding fault, we decided to work strategically with our partners in our H R department to help to mitigate these alarming trends. We participated in fairs, regional fairs, and used very creative strategies and collaborations with our contract agencies to ensure that we could be staffed as completely as possible. And we were able to accomplish that goal. People are not your most important asset, the right people are. Even though it's on the first slide that you just, the last slide you saw where we vetted over seven hundred fifty applications, we want to make sure that we're not just putting people in front of our children, we want the right people in front of our children. And we won't compromise by taking substandard staff or people that we know that won't be a good fit for our organization to be placed in front of our learners. We want for our learners what any of us would want for our own children. And so here, you can see that we were able to meet our goal of being mostly staffed. Most teachers will be very excited at seeing lots of hundred-percent marks all over a paper. And so here, you can see that we were able to do that with some of these highly specialized categories of hard-to-find special education service providers. Worth of note, but not on one of the scrolls, is the conversation and thinking about our school psychologists, who was one of the groups that made a mass exodus as part of that great resignation. But we were able, despite losing many of our school psychologists to that, we were able to turn that around with some creative problem-solving and thinking. We were able to start the school year fully staffed with our school psychologists, who were highly skilled, diverse, and also licensed in the state of Kansas to provide this service to close the gap so that we could meet all of those different components of compliance that you heard Dr. Lowry talk about with timely evaluations, getting those C to B evaluations completed, and to ensure that our students were ready with those evaluation reports as needed. We also were able to use our waiver and our limited apprenticeship licensure programming for alternative certs, formerly the Period of Teacher Program, to also fill and close those gaps. And then also keep phenomenal people within our district, so it's a grow-your-own kind of approach. So at this time, I will, Dr. Lowry is going to return and talk about our final priority, oversight and accountability, and then close our presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dana and Dorita. So I am grateful to my SPED administration team, who have played a vital role in reviewing, assessing where we are, and understanding the direction we are headed. The next two slides list some of the immediate needs that called for immediate attention and response. In order to rebound successfully, we understand and appreciate the history and the work that has been done before us. However, we are in a place in our department that we can reimagine how we serve students, families, teachers, support staff, and our building leaders. In our SPED admin meetings, we plan, problem-solve together, and we have spent a great deal of time seeking to understand the historical perspective, asking questions of many, and reviewing data, and we hold each other accountable for moving the work forward. We have been forward-thinking to find ways to fill the gaps in our process and procedures, while staying encouraged in understanding the level of work that it will take to have a positive impact on how we serve students and fulfill our heavily enriched compliance expectations. And the data has guided our action steps in order for us to begin to renew. What seemed to be the impossible became the impossible when we adopted and implemented our new I E P system after twenty years of using our previous system. And although this first year has been met with this fair amount of challenges, our SPED teachers, related service providers, our school psychs have been amazing. They have understood and remained flexible, and they have really worked through some of the challenges and the kinks of the first-year implementation, and they've asked grace of our families as we made the shift. And I couldn't be more proud and appreciative of all that they have done, and I want to publicly thank each person who persevered and didn't give up on this process. We have engaged more parents and provided them more access to our SPED leadership team. Through our parent support line, it has been available to them pretty much twenty-four hours a day, text messages, calls, finding ways to empower our families and resources for our families. As you can see on this slide, we have also created many process and procedures to ensure compliance moving forward. Although this is not an exhaustive list, they do represent the actions that we have had to take to begin to renew our SPED department. All the work that's ahead of the SPED department that's left to do, this is not anything I can or want to do alone. It will take every single person and role listed in the Special Education Organization chart. That's over five hundred staff who will have to play an essential role in approving our services to students, families, and to each other. And if I can, I just want to take a moment, and my SPED, some of my SPED administrators have extended their day-to-day to be here to support our leadership team, so I want them to stand and just be recognized because I appreciate the long hours that they put in and some of the things that we take on because we know it's a part of the work that we have to do. So thank you so much. So the work that we do to improve our practices, we value our staff, and we appreciate our parents who trust us every single day to make informed decisions about how we serve their children. I know our teachers, our peer professionals, our service providers, our school psychs, our building leaders, our SPED leadership team, we all want the same thing, and we are striving to do the best that we can every day to serve our students. And if we can keep them kids first, I know that all of our children will succeed. Thank you so much for your patience. I know this was a long report, but I appreciate your time in allowing us to give this SPED report today.
Thank you, Dr. Lowry and staff, board members.
I'd just like to say that thank you for giving us all of these areas to show us where the concerns are and then to be able to put a plan in a place where we can move in a more positive direction. I know we didn't get there by the purpose of trying to deal with failure, but since we have addressed it, I can see that we're going to be moving forward in a very positive way. And again, to you and everyone that is here, I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Russell.
Good evening, and thank you for your report. First off, I have said this to you, but I publicly just want to say I just want to commend, as a parent with a special-needs child in the Gifted Program, I just want to commend the Gifted staff for all that they do to go above and beyond for our students. Additionally, since you've been here, I'm passionate about parent involvement, and I have never met someone so passionate, especially around children with disabilities, ensuring that parents know their rights. And I had the privilege to attend the Families Empowerment Event, and like you said, I'm looking forward to the next time and ensuring that even more folks are there because I think it was an eye-opening experience for me as a parent, but also to get to know other parents' stories and to know that there truly are supports out there, you know, to both advocate and support for my child, but for other parents that are going through unique situations. So thank you to you and your team for all that you do, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Anything else from board members? Thanks again. Board, can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, board, I would entertain a motion that we recess to executive session starting at six seventeen, for ten minutes. This recess, recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes, this will include Dr. Lowry.
Thank you.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd entertain a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board, we will now move into the COVID protocols for 2023. This is just a discussion that will be, that I will hand over to Dr. Stubblefield.
And Ms. Lewis is on her way up because she may be able to answer a few of the questions if you have them. But I just wanted first to say the information that is provided there were based on the presentations and the decisions that, the different policies that existed during this school year. This is just a reminder that all of these will expire on June 30th of this year. One additional piece of information, and I apologize that you received it, I think today, we received it yesterday, and it's the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, their COVID-19 testing and guidance and/or COVID-19 testing protocol guidance for the 2022, 2223 school year. I, I'm, we're not asking the board to necessarily make any decisions tonight, but if you chose to, you're more than welcome. We wanted you to have the information. I believe also we sent, there were some questions around the cost that was incurred for the COVID, covering COVID-related absences or illness and the five days that were provided to staff for presenting their vaccination card and the cost of those who chose to sell their days back. Doesn't mean that the people who sold it back sold back five days, they could sell about one through five, and some people had all five days and sold them back, and some people sold one, but that cost was a little over a million dollars. I think if you have that list of questions, the total cost may have been right under $3 million or $2 something. I should look it up before I make up something. But I will pause and let you ask any questions that you have. Ms. Lewis is here, and if it's something specifically for her, you can ask. When we spoke with the Health Department, or actually when they communicated with Ms. Lewis, they shared that they no longer contact trace in the form like where, when COVID first began up until the point when they, they now say they do case investigations, which is the recommendation that is within the KDHE where you notify individuals that they, I mean, if there was a positive case here at the board meeting, we would send something out saying there was a positive case, you were there, monitor your symptoms or whatever, but they are not necessarily, the Health Department is not necessarily saying you need to quarantine for X number of days unless you have symptoms and that sort of thing. So, it puts the district, and Greg can speak to this, when the Health Department is not requiring or enforcing that legally, it puts us in a situation where we can't necessarily, maybe using the wrong term, be enforcing something that they're not saying we can do. But the board still has the right to create what policies that they set forth. But Greg can speak to the contact tracing and quarantine in conjunction with where the Health Department may be.
Right, and the way it works is the school district has the right to set policies and procedures for the school district, its buildings, its facilities, its activities, all that type of stuff. But the right to actually do things like contact tracing, the right to set medical policies still resides statutorily with the county health departments and the state health department. And really, we can't exceed what they do because when we were doing that contact tracing, we were imposing those requirements, we were doing it at the behest or the direction of the county health department. So, we just have to be careful about that piece of it. So, you need to follow their lead in terms of what that looks like because our authority to do those things is derived from them, which doesn't mean we can't tell parents, for example, that there's been a medical issue at a particular building or something like that, we just can't identify specific individuals, we lose that ability to do that. Does that make sense?
So, Ms. Page, so if we go into the new year, because it doesn't seem like it makes sense to wait till the end of the year, well, or at least by the end of June, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do. And we say we're here to make sure that all the kids are safe. You need to do some kind of contract, not to tell a name, but we do need to find out because it, my question, and they answered it, we went into, we ended the year making it optional, and we ended up with about 12 schools who had to go back. And currently, now in summer school, you got one. So, there is a concern, we, you know, and they're saying hospitalization is going up in both states, Kansas and Missouri. Also, the numbers are going up. And again, I'm, I don't have a problem if it's optional, but for those 50%, because it was a 50-50 vote when we surveyed the parents who said, hey, I think we need to wear masks, I think we need to put forth some effort to keep everybody safe. And if we're having trouble hiring people and they're going to come to work and get sick, then there's a problem, and we need to address that.
The place where you, the place where you run into a legal issue is specifically with the contact tracing and the identification of individuals, that's where we run into the legal.
I got that, I'm not saying give their names.
Yeah, I know.
Let's just let people know that there's an outbreak. Is that, is that wrong? Can you not do that?
As long as you don't personally identify the individual involved, you have to be a little careful about that because if you-- And you have to be a little careful about that because if you arrow it down to there's an outbreak in a classroom with three individuals, then that kind of identifies the person. But you can do it by building level or potentially by grade level and things like that, just like we've done in other epidemics in the past with a flu outbreak or something like that.
And, and Ms. Page, I just want to clarify the masking component about if we reach the 5% threshold based off of the COVID-related absences when people, that's separate from contact tracing. Like if, if we have a positive case and we look at a situation, if that threshold or masking is optional unless you hit a threshold, that's separate from the contact tracing, so you.
I got that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, let, can we, it is a public health issue. Can we not keep them safe? And when are we gonna, well, can I ask this? What is the recommendation of our health specialists?
I can show you what we're currently doing. We are currently using the title contact tracing, but we are not going in depth to trace. We are following the guidance from the Health Department to do contact investigations, meaning that if a classroom goes back to mask, everyone in that classroom will receive the message to go back to mask, just saying your class is in masks until further notice. And if the school is going back to mask, everyone will receive a message through bright arrow that the school is in mask until further notice. So we have stopped actual contact tracing what the law states, but we've moved to a, and we probably just need to change that verbiage to contact, contact investigations because that's currently what we are doing. We don't have the manpower to do the in-depth tracing right now.
So with the current team that you have, is that enough to do? But I thought, and help me out, you said contract investigation? Do we have enough people to do that adequately?
For, for right now, yes. But we are in an endemic in the nation. However, when you get clusters of schools, schools that have outbreaks, sometimes it, we have to have an all-hands-on-deck approach. I can't say that too much from now, we won't need to hire additional contact tracers. But for right now, we have enough through summer school until the beginning, but that could change. It's day-to-day.
So I guess my question is, how is the notification of students that need to wear a mask in a classroom different than what you're saying we had to be careful with? Because I'm assuming we're notifying families that your student's class has returned back to masking. So I guess I'm unclear how that's different than what you're saying we would have to be careful from a legal perspective if those are essentially the same two things.
Two, a couple of different things. One is, we're not, we're not quarantining, we're not requiring them to do specific things beyond the masking requirement, but we're also not identifying the specific individual. So in a, in a sense.
But you're still saying that it's in the classroom, which I thought you just said.
I said you have to be careful. So like, for example, if you got down to a classroom that was very small, that might identify the person without identifying the person, right? So in that situation, what you might have to do is you might have to expand it beyond that classroom and say, you know, the fifth grade class at this school, fifth grade wouldn't be a good example, but I'm, I'm thinking of like a small class that might be, say, a special education class or something that would have such a small number of students in it that by saying that that class has to have a masking requirement, you might inadvertently be identifying who's involved. That's what you have to be careful about. So it, it's doable, it's being managed, it's just that's.
But I guess I'm really asking, is that part of the actual process ensuring that it's not easily identifiable?
Well.
If, if that's the legal matter that we're trying to avoid, I guess I don't really understand how, how it wouldn't become identifiable. Because I would assume the person that has COVID is no longer in the classroom, but you've been exposed. So I feel like it's.
Yeah.
Either way, but.
I think it's just like when you identify and say there's been a flu outbreak or some, an influenza outbreak, or somebody else has some contagious disease or illness in a particular classroom, you might identify, and we've done this in the past, that there's been an outbreak at the school, or there's been an outbreak at this grade level, or there's been an outbreak in this classroom. And by the same token, people can surmise or guess as to who the student or the, or the staff member is by virtue of their absence. You're right, they could figure it out, but that's not the same thing as us telling everybody their name.
I will just say this. I know we're not voting on it tonight. My, after reading the recommendation from KDHE as it relates to K-12, I would encourage board members to, I know that we like to depend on local. Our local government unfortunately, but honestly, is not able to provide a recommendation. I think it would be in our best interest to follow the recommendation of KDHE, which asks that we follow the most conservative community level, which would either be the community level that is reported by KDHE, which currently has us at medium and our surrounding counties at high. But then if we were not to, if that was not the community level we wanted to follow, that we follow the CDC, which is currently at low. But I would be in favor of following the recommendations as recommended by KDHE, but also stating that I am not an expert in this area, and that is why I am taking it upon myself to feel as though the best recommendation comes from those who have the, who do the work every day, and their recommendation is to follow the community levels.
Okay. Ms. Page?
And then what about for the workers? Dr. Stubblefield, we have people who come to work, and they didn't come to work with COVID, somehow they got it at work. So, you know, what is our policy going to be on that? Because we want to be fair to people, because if I walk in and I'm not, everything is okay, but before the week is out, I'm sick. And should I have to give up my sick days? Because I, I didn't come sick.
Well, I, I think, and I'm not an expert in this. I'm just following what, when I've talked to KDHE and others and other organizations at the beginning of the pandemic stage, lots of organizations and even the federal government provided the funding for the days to be accounted as they've moved, as we've been declared to be moving to an endemic, that does not occur. So financially, if the board, if that's a priority for the board, the dollars will just have to be allocated to ensure that we can continue with that. I will say with contact investigation versus contact tracing is even more difficult to determine if it's work-related, and it's almost impossible. So the assumption would either be that anybody who gets it, it came from work, which will be more expensive for the board than it was this current year, or I don't know how you would be able to approve or disprove. So with that shift in how the Health Department and others are saying you should conduct contact, not conduct contact tracing, but contact investigation, it will create a more challenging process for the human resources and the health team. And then the board would need to determine how financially it would be paid for.
Well, can we ask, we have a health specialist. Can we not ask her to put together a presentation and present by the next meeting so that we can vote on something? We're going to have to come up with something by that next meeting.
No, absolutely. The purpose of this initial conversation, it was asked to be on there for a discussion. She, it will give Ms. Lewis an opportunity to hear like on a spectrum where the board is and then to look at what the recommendations are and then to come back regarding what she recommends. I will say that as far as COVID days, I don't necessarily think that's in, that's not her expertise.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying.
But the other portion, absolutely.
Can we utilize, we have a specialist.
Yeah, she, but today she was just taking in the information and sharing what she has from like the KDHE and other resources that she can put together. In her response, she did outline just in general what she would recommend, but she could definitely come back with, here is what is recommended for the 22-23 school year in regards to addressing COVID-19.
And then we did as an incentive, and there's still ESER money. Not offer an incentive for people to go get vaccinated if they chose to. It's optional. But if they did, we just did it where we offered an incentive. If they did do it, can we not offer that again? I'm just throwing it out. I'm not saying we're going to do it, but that might be one way to get more people to get vaccinated.
Yeah, so it, I do believe it's an allowable expense. I will say ESER 1, you had lots of flexibility and freedom. ESER 2, they tighten up a little more. ESER 3 is very tight. And the paperwork around that, I can have Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Walker to federally look into what the requirements are. But I do know that anytime the federal dollars are being given, like for example, with a retention bonus, everyone would have to sign a maintenance of effort. For vaccination, that's a one time, that's probably doable. If you were considering using dollars for days, every time, an hour a day or anything that was related, there will be paperwork tied to it. So if it's more of like a one-time single event, it's more trackable and doable. But if it's something that you really can't control, like who's out when, that's a little more difficult. But I, I know, I, I believe it's an allowable expense, and I believe for whether it's for new people or boosters or whatever may be happening, that's where we can look at options and see what that looks like and present that to the board. And I will double check with Ms. Kaiser and Ms. Walker because they federally are looking at what is required. And if we don't have that information by the next board meeting, we can have it prior to the start of the official school year, so the board will have information.
KDHE also mentioned that they have funding available, and it mentioned staffing. And so I'm assuming that some of these costs can be recuperated from what they're saying is available?
Not incentives, but staffing, like if we, if we hire more, we have, we are awarded the KDHE grant. So if we needed to hire more contact tracers, more testers, more nurses, test kits and those kind of things, but those dollars can't be used for incentives.
And are, does that also mean, I know at one time Ms. Romstead talked about learn, or tests to play. Are we still participating in those programs moving forward?
We are, and we are enrolled in tests to play, tests to stay, and tests to learn. So we're in all three programs. We have the test kits here. We have been doing that program at a modified approach. And, and the new KDHE guidelines, it gives us a little bit more leeway where, I don't know if you guys looked at the infogram that I put on the response. It has where on day six through 10, they can stay. And that is the additional testing monies for those days six through 10, that if they're still positive and symptomatic, we as a school can send them back home. If they're not having symptoms, they may still test positive and we can keep them at school. So yes, we are currently in that until '24.
The board where I think we landed is Dr. Stubblefield and her staff. Ms. Lewis will put together a couple of different options as we move into the 2022-2023 school district, school year, and bring those back to the board. It sounds like it would also include maybe how vacation time or stick time should be handled as well. Is that where we are in agreeance?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the board. Dr. Stubblefield, Ms. Lewis, you have any questions for us before we, before we let you go?
Nothing, nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, so no further action is needed there. We will now move into, bear with me here just a moment, executive session. We all aligned there. Session, this executive, executive session is for purpose of discussing matters related, relating to security measures, which if discussed in open session would jeopardize such security measures. Want to make sure I got that right, Mr. Goheen? Am I good? Okay, all right, thank you. I entertain a motion that we.
Chief Nicholson will be my, yeah.
Thank you. That would include Chief Nicholson as well. Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you.
And what amount of time?
We need 10 minutes, so 10 minutes starting at 6:52.
And staff, you are free to go because I think the remainders are accepted. Executive session with the acceptance of Sam Reddick.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need roll call, please. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Board, I entertain a motion to return back to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Now, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
And now, I entertain a motion that we recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, starting at 7:36.
So moved.
Second.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
And now, I entertain a motion that we recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, starting at 7:36.
So moved.
Second.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
And now, I entertain a motion that we recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
And now, I entertain a motion that we recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, starting at 7:36.
So moved.
Second.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
And now, I entertain a motion that we recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
How many minutes?
I'm sorry, for 10 minutes, thank you. For 10 minutes, starting at 7:21.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion that we return back to regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphreys.
Janie Humphreys, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
And now, I entertain a motion that we recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, starting at 7:36.
So moved.
Second.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphreys.
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.